Good morning. We'll call this meeting of the Sierra County Commission, November 17th, 2020, to order. The governor has reenacted the restrictions due to the health order. So this meeting is not being attended by members of the public, but is available on stream, thanks to GPK Media and a lot of other sources. We're glad to have you with us this morning. If anyone has public comment, they need to mail that to dmiranda@sierra co.org or bswingle@sierra co.org on Monday, the day before the meeting, so that we can include that. Any items that are public comment will be read into the record. Is there a public hearing this morning, Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there is not.
Clerk Truhill, would you do a call of a roll call here?
District one.
Here.
District two.
Here.
District three.
Here.
Mary Jo Fall, you're with us this morning. Would you lead us in the pledge?
I would be honored to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I lift the flag of the state of New Mexico, the symbol of our friendship among united cultures.
Thank you. I see that we have have some guests. Wilson and Company is here. They're going to do a presentation on our flood and drainage control. Commissioner-elect Hank Hopkins is here. Hank, welcome. Mary Jo Fall, long-term community wildfire protection leader in our county. We're glad to have you with us. And we have others. We have Clerk Truhill, Attorney Pato, Dora Miranda, Jocelyn Hoagene, and of course, Mr. Manager Bruce Swingle. Welcome all. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Day moves to amend the agenda by removing item C under the consent agenda item.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, Shelley.
District one.
Yes.
District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
We'll move on to the minutes of the regular meeting. Is there a motion?
Commissioner Day moves to approve the minutes from the regular meeting.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved and seconded. A roll call, Shelley.
District one.
Yes.
District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Mr. Manager, I have no public comments. Do you have any?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I do not.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Day moves to approve consent agenda items A, B, and D as presented.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved and seconded. A roll call, please.
District one.
Yes.
District two.
Yes.
District three.
Yes.
Motion is approved. Presentations and reports. Mr. Manager, the county reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I've given you a copy of the department reports, the detention administrator's report, and also her report on the behavioral health grants. As far as the administration's concerned, we have had seven positive COVID cases to date. Road Department Sheriff's Office assessor and detention offices. With the reconstitution of the public health order and the restrictions the county has imposed, all of the restrictions as required by the public health order in all of the county offices and departments. Each office is open and available to the public. The Date Street, the Assessor Treasurer and Clerk's Office are asking that individuals call and notify them so they can make arrangements for them to come into the building to avoid any mass gatherings in the building. Eloy's done a tremendous job with the CARES Small Business Grant. The state sent us the funding, the reimbursement for those, that project. It's $292,000 and some change. The entire amount is going to be awarded to 31 businesses are going to receive money. We had a couple of other additional businesses that either pulled their applications, or we just simply didn't have enough funding to accommodate them all. But when you see Eloy, please, you know, recognize him for what he's done. It was a very tough process. We had to create the process because one didn't exist in New Mexico, and the state did as well. And they went through a lot of gyrations in changing the qualifiers for a business, and over time we're able to work it out. But it took, you know, 30 days to make this happen. We did ask for a little more documentation from some businesses than others based on the complete application, but bottom line is this is taxpayer money, and we have to defend it in a federal audit.
Yep.
So we did our due diligence to make sure that we had all the documents we needed to validate the awards. Each award is up to $10,000. Most received the full $10,000 grant. However, some just didn't qualify for the full 10, but they were reimbursed to the extent that we could reimburse them. But in total, 31 businesses received, will receive the award. We will have to have a special commission meeting. We did not have time from Friday to get it on the agenda today. So we'll ask the Commissioners later when would be a good date for a special meeting, just to do the resolution to increase revenue and expenditures, the $292,000 and change. The broadband project is moving forward. Sierra Electric Co-op and Sacred Winds have received a little more than $8 million in Phase One and Two for the broadband project. This basically includes everything south of Williamsburg to the county line. It includes all the communities south of Williamsburg, including Cabayo, Animas, Los Palomas, Array, Winston, and, I'm sorry, Kingston and Hillsborough. That's Phase One and Phase Two, which are basically going on simultaneously. The target date for Phase One is to complete it by the summer of 2021, and Phase Two, it'd be the end of 2021 to the first quarter of 2022. So it's really, we're working at warp speed, really, to get this accomplished, and they're all working at warp speed to get it accomplished. There's an auction of broadband access going on right now. In the next day or so, we're going to have a better picture of what's eligible in Sierra County. And once that's done, then we'll put the team together and look at what is the best grant opportunity for us, and then we'll submit the grant for the next phase when we have a little more information. The auction is actually starting, I believe it's starting today, where they're bidding for regions and broadband access in territories.
Bruce, before you go on.
Yes, sir.
When will the north and west end of the counties receive broadband? Do we have any idea on that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
The Winston and Western areas?
Yeah, that's going to be Phase Three.
Okay.
To complete the rest of the county, three and possibly a four, depending on the funding availability. And we'll have a better picture after the auction, and we'll know how much area we can go after. There are areas that we're not going to be able to go after, and we're hoping that we won't have any of those in New Mexico. I think the broadband study was very clear and articulate as to why we have the voids in Sierra County as well as in the rest of New Mexico, rural New Mexico. And I think we're going to use that as, you know, as our selling point for the next grant and get as much capacity as we can. The Sierra County Government Complex, for the lack of a better term, is moving forward. The plans are complete, and the demolition work is either done or just about done today, and they're going into some of the construction mode immediately thereafter. So pretty excited about getting that building, you know, operational where we can move in. We do need to start thinking about a name for the complex. The Sierra County Government Complex is kind of wordy, so might start thinking about that.
Kind of bureaucratic, isn't it?
Yes. We have a Sierra Vista Hospital Board Meeting on December 10th, and the Better Informed Public Official Training. Because of the pandemic and the public health orders, it's all going to be done virtually on Zoom, and the dates are going to be December 1st and 2nd and December 7th and 8th. They'll break it into two, two-day blocks for the newly elected officials. Our target date for the swearing-in ceremony of the new elected officials is December 15th at the next commission meeting, the December Commission meeting. You know, and we'll do it after the meeting. Thus far, we're contacting the newly elected officials as well as a judge to preside over the ceremony. The Assessor's Office has handled all their protests, have been resolved at this point, and they were, at the printing of their monthly report, the public health order wasn't in place. So they were back into normal office routine, and of course, that has been curtailed substantially. Reduced number of staff in the office and field work is restricted to absolute essential work that needs to be done. Sales and building permits continue to be strong, and the prison staff are pretty busy continuing their reevaluation of the county. The office is prepared for all the tax bill questions that'll be coming shortly to their office, and they're geared up for that. The Clerk's Office, of course, we had the early voting, huge success. The clerk, deputy clerk, the Clerk's Office need to be commended for, it was such a challenge this year. It was feast or famine. In the early voting, we had probably more early voters than we've ever had in the history of Sierra County. And with public health orders and the space restrictions, it kind of got heated on some occasions. So they did an amazing job. And Sierra County's numbers are in and submitted, and there are no issues with them. So congratulations to the clerk.
Thank you for that, Shelley.
Emergency management is continuing to keep the community informed on the public health order and restrictions. Any new information that needs to be communicated to the public, he's doing that via radio, and of course, we're doing newspaper articles as well when necessary. Thus far, the county has provided over 138,000 pieces of personal protective equipment to healthcare providers, to governmental entities that are in need of it. Facility management's continuing their routine maintenance on buildings, but there's a lot of emphasis on COVID-19 buildings. If we have a positive test, or we had somebody that was positive, we are going in and decontaminating the facility and the spaces that are at issue. Of course, they were very involved in the election and assisting the Clerk's Office with getting voting machines to the site locations and getting them back. Flood, I'm not going to go over all of his activities for the month, but Flood was pretty busy last month. Met with a number of contractors. Ironically, the state, unbeknownst to anybody, they're requiring the floodplain management review, construction projects, and issue a permit on the jobs. Well, our contractors didn't know that. They found that out when they were calling for inspections and going to the final checklist, that the inspector would point out that they didn't have their floodplain permit or review of that particular project. So Travis did the right thing. He brought them all in and talked to them and explained to them what the requirements were, and moving forward, it should move pretty smoothly for the office as well as the contractors.
Did that hold any projects up?
It did initially, yes. Yes, because contractors had no idea they were required to do it. They didn't know who to contact or what to do to make that happen. So Travis met with them and educated them on it. Misdemeanor compliance program, they have 200 DWI pretrial clients, 45 misdemeanor probation clients, 52 DWI probation clients. Electronic monitoring, we have eight that have ankle monitors and 22 are on sober track. The Road Department chipped sealed the St. Cloud Road in Winston, and after finishing the Winston project, they moved to A007, which is behind Bar Two, and did some work there, basically caused from the flood damage that we had a couple of weeks ago.
Bruce, on that Winston project, that really is a nice result. It's a full two lanes now. It was narrow, and climbing that hill coming into Winston is going to be great for long-term maintenance. So Billy and crew really need to be giving an attaboy on that project.
I'll tell them. Thank you.
It's outstanding.
Thank you. And one of the niceties, there's so few of those, where we actually have companies donating equipment to us and materials. Holly Frontier donated some product that allowed the Road Department to continue to chip seal additional areas that they did not have the funding to do. They received, they had a surplus from a project in Silver City and donated it to the county. SCURDA, they're fully staffed again, and SCURDA is pretty much in lockdown status, keeping the dispatchers safe and healthy in the facility. They've been in lockdown status for a couple of weeks now, and it's pretty tight to get in there. You can't unless you have essential business in SCURDA at this point. And we have a limited number of dispatchers, and I think it was an appropriate thing to do for the operation. The Treasurer's Office, the 2020 tax collections, as of Friday, the 13th, collected 2.5 million in property taxes. They, of course, they received the CARES Act funding and have that available. I'll deal with that in a special meeting. They're working with the auditors on last-minute cleanup for the audit, and they're continuing. Kudos to Terri. She is, for months now, has been working with Candy and developing Candy's skill sets, you know, for the treasurer. A lot of mentoring and coaching going on. Kudos to both of them. Mr. Chairman, I would like to take a couple of minutes to talk about COVID. I did give you the detention report, so there's no sense in reviewing that. But the COVID numbers are statewide and locally. I give you an update every day on where we are with COVID statewide and locally. As of yesterday through the 16th, we've had 19,000, over 19,000 claims in New Mexico, which is, it actually surpassed October, which was our highest month by far, almost double any other month. So midway through the month, we've already exceeded that number. We're probably tracking to be around 34,000 cases for the month of October, November. Deaths continue to increase. As of yesterday, we had 218 deaths for the month of November. Our highest month was in May. That was the peak of the deaths, and things have gone down steadily since then. However, we're at 218 halfway through the month, so we're going to set another unfortunate record with respect to deaths related to COVID. The county, thus far, we've had 72 cases for the month of November in Sierra County. Last month was our high at 80 cases, so we're going to exceed that number very likely. Presently, we have 200 cases in Sierra County. There's been 56 recoveries, and we mentioned this in prior meetings, that the recoveries, that is the one issue that gets the least amount of attention from the Department of Health. They're busy tracking cases, they're busy testing, and tracking the recoveries and documenting the recoveries is kind of the last, when they don't have anything else to do, that's pretty much what they're doing. So it's their last degree of focus is on that. We've had over 10,000 people tested in Sierra County. Our positivity rate is, the cumulative rate is 1.89%. However, our 14-day positivity rate right now is 4.82%. We've had two deaths. Statewide, there's 1,236 deaths as of yesterday. So I just remind everybody that the public health orders are in place. We're required to wear masks in public. Social distancing is required, and the governor's asking us to stay home unless it's absolutely necessary that we have to leave our homes. Paul's covering that material on a daily basis and communicating that to the media and to the public. So I'll stand for any questions the Commissioners may have.
Commissioners?
I've got one question.
Go ahead.
On the Date Street building, Bruce, are those offices open by appointment?
On the date street builders, are those offices open by appointment only, or are we not allowing any public in?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. Chairman, commissioners. They do make an appointment to go in. The offices are, 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 the doors are locked, and they're letting people in on an individual basis.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's pretty important for paying taxes. We need to be able to get them in there, so.
It is. This is a very bad time for the treasurer's office and the assessors office, just as it was a bad time for the clerk's office in the election. They've all had major struggles to deal with, and they're, they're dealing with them very well. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Manager, to that point, is there a means to waive the credit card processing fee if they pay online during this, so they don't come in the office? Is that something we can look at? Is that, I, I don't know what to do, but I mean, if we're telling them, you have to, you know, come up with a different process, or make an appointment to come pay your bill, or, you know, I think we need to promote that, or we shouldn't have to charge the customers more while we're telling them we don't want them in the office.
Yeah, we don't charge them, like, if the system not charges them, or the service, it's not right through the county.
Okay, but they're still being charged that fee to pay it?
The credit card fee?
Right.
Yeah. I will check with the treasurer and the county attorney.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. And secondly, and the governor's statement was that it will be county by county after the thirtieth, and I did see part of a PowerPoint sheet that said, we really don't have any decision making in that process. It depends on the numbers of the cases in that county. Do we have any more information? Has anything been relayed through the association of counties? Is there anything we need to do? Is, I mean, is she still dictating what will happen based on the numbers? Do we know what that looks like?
Mr. Chairman, commissioners, Commissioner Luna, when we started the pandemic, we were all in this together, and the focus of the, the focus of the pandemic was in the northwest part of the state. We didn't have cases for, in southern New Mexico for months.
Yep.
But we were all in this together. That was the slogan. We've changed that now, and it looks like based on our positivity rates after two weeks or thereabout, they're going to open up communities based on the positivity rates at that time. Right now, our positivity rate is under the five percent, which is what she was targeting, as I understand. They've communicated no information to any of us as to what the targets are for each community to open up. I'm not sure that they know that answer at this time, to be honest with you. We're, we are in contact with the Department of Health frequently, and I'll ask them about the open up phase, what, what we need to do as a community and how that's going to be done. But I think they're probably still working that out themselves.
It would be nice to have some decision criteria.
You're right.
Yeah.
Well, and, and if I might, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
You know what? I think it, as the fair board chairman, I'm going to say, we had over two hundred people at a county fair that we had restricted access to in four days, and we had a single case come from that activity. And in looking at the rapid response report, you see countless cases where they're having to change clothes when they go to work, when they leave, where it's sterilized, where it's bleached, where residents can't leave their rooms. All of these overwhelming precautions are taken care of is where all the cases are, and I won't say all of them, a lot of them are coming from. And so it's disheartening, I think, I, I will find agreement with my other commissioners that, you know, we're restricting and we're locking down all of Sierra County when we have the healthcare part being responsible for so many of them. Spin Launch is still reporting twelve of that two hundred cases, but we've been told they only had two confirmed cases. I, I don't know how you shut down an entire state when we can't count on the numbers that are actually coming through the Department of Health. Every day I get those Department of Health reports, and there's, you know, two or three paragraphs where somebody was counted twice, or somebody was counted in the wrong county, or, you know, this person was taken off because they reported dead in three counties. Like, I, I don't know how you shut down an entire state, shut down the economy, do what we're doing, when the numbers are not actually accurate and hard and, and true. So, you know, I hope that this is over in two weeks. I pray that this commission has some kind of ability to make a decision, or, you know, we can do something, because that money is already gone. Those, our businesses have no, there's no more pots to draw from. And, and it's the time where our small businesses make their money with the Christmas shopping, and that takes them through back to, you know, when summer visitors are here. And I think we've got to do whatever we can. So hopefully, we have good news coming in the coming days.
If I may just say something to that point. Back when this first started, we all, we always pushed for local, you know, let the local government bodies make the decisions, right? When it's coming from the state, I think Commissioner Luna echoed it very well, it's coming down from the state, well, they don't know what's impacting Sierra County. We do. So I think one thing, when we have discussions with Department of Health, with the association of counties, is we need to push for, whenever this two weeks is over, let some decision making come from the local body. I think that's what we need to strive for at this point. I mean, we're, we are where we are in the next two weeks. But in that two weeks, let us make the decisions. We know what's best for our constituents, for our communities. Give some power to us, and I think that's something we need to push for. And so that's what I just ask, whenever you have conversations with Department of Health, with the association, that's what we strive for, is let us make the decisions for our community.
Thank you.
Bruce, I really appreciate the daily updates, especially with some of the editorial comments that, that strive to explain what the numbers mean. One of my big concerns is there's not a whole lot of emphasis, along with the recovery rate, but there's not a whole lot of emphasis on hospitalizations due to the number of new cases. And I was talking to CEO of the hospital, Eric Stokes, yesterday, that, that they are prepared for COVID patients because they can't transfer out. There's no place they can go with those patients, not even Memorial down in, in Cruzes. And, and we're also prepared to take patients in the old wing of the hospital, but according to Mr. Stokes, we don't have any patients coming into ER needing hospitalization. When we communicate to Department of Health and to New Mexico counties, I think it's really key that we talk about the things that are impacting Sierra County, especially where it's a, a lack of a pressing need, where most people are treated with therapeutics and sent home and, and recover. I, I think it's key that we talk about the impacts, like Commissioner Luna talked about, on this fragile economy we have and how it's being impacted and the downstream impacts on not just Sierra County, but all of governance in the three communities and, and the outlying areas. It's, it's frustrating that our input is not even asked for, much less taken into consideration. So please bear that home, and, and if we as a commission, commission need to do a resolution, I think that with a motion, we would be willing to pass that forward and maybe an item of consideration for the special meeting. But I also want to compliment Chief Thule on the post on social media. Those get the word out to everyone who looks at Facebook and other social media outlets that, that have that, and I think that's outstanding public information to share with those folks. So thank you, Chief.
To echo on that, Mr. Chairman, we have calls at the radio station and newspaper asking why the city doesn't give a daily update. And so I think that speaks volumes for how prepared the county is and the stance we have taken on informing the public. And so you and Mr. Thule are both to be commended for that.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Manager.
That's all I have, sir.
Okay. We have a presentation for Mary with an E., Joe Fall.
Thank you.
Come on up here.
Old friend.
Old friend, let's not say how many years.
How many years have you been doing this community wildfire protection and coordination?
About eighteen.
Eighteen. I was thinking it was twenty.
I like that number. I'll say twenty, it was twenty years.
Well, this is our little appreciation. It's a, a plaque of dedicated service to Mary Joe Fall in recognition of the milestones you've achieved and the accomplishments you've earned. Thank you for giving your time with loyalty and dedication in appreciation Sierra County. So we're so proud of you, and you've done well, and we thank you very much.
But I didn't do it for recognition, so this was a surprise when you said that. Francis, thanks. I tried really hard not to come.
You got cor.
I did, because I didn't really want to. I didn't do it for this, but I appreciate the support of the county and the recognition. And I, I think this, this work is important in that Chief Thule will carry on with the, the regulation part and the part that needs to go on. And again, thanks to, this effort that I did was actually from the efforts of your local volunteer fire department members and your partners, the State Forestry Bill and the Forest Service, because we did a lot, but it was, it was all there. We have a really good partnership, so I hope that that continues too. I, I appreciate you doing this for me. I didn't really want that, but.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, can I go up there, everybody?
Sure.
I'm violating every rule there is, but I don't care, because I work for nobody. Congratulations. Thanks, Bruce. Thanks for spelling my name right.
Since, since Mary Joe is leaving that post, it's going to fall to Chief Thule to carry that community wildfire protection on, and it's so important, as we experienced just this last summer from the MEMS pond fire, so we're going to, we're going to continue that, Mary Joe. You can watch us, you and your soon to be retired husband can cheerlead from the sidelines, and, and we do, we do appreciate you a lot. Mr. Manager, we're to presentation of the master drainage plan by Wilson and Company. Please go ahead.
We do. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, this has been a long project and certainly very significant for Sierra County. We have had flood control issues in this county for, well, since the beginning of time, and we were fortunate that our legislators gave us funding, little four hundred thousand dollars, to conduct a countywide flood, master flood drainage study for the county. Jocelyn went through a procurement process and hired Wilson to, to do the study. She's been infinitely involved with the project from the beginning. Travis Atwell has been very involved in it, and the road superintendent as well. Billy Neely and Clay Spears, when he was the road superintendent, been very involved in accomplishing this, and I think you're going to really appreciate the effort and accuracy and detail that Wilson put into the project. Jocelyn, do you have anything you'd like to say to, before we introduce the, Wilson?
I just would like to extend my appreciation on all the hard work that Wilson did for Sierra County and the communication between all of us and the time they've taken to do all this work that the people can't see, but it's a lot of work, and I appreciate everybody's time during this COVID. It's been an experience.
Yeah, I think that they're going to make it sound like this was pretty easy, and our next steps are going to be pretty easy. However, it's tremendous amount of work, and you'll see that as they go forward with the presentation. Thank you.
I'm an old man who doesn't hear very well, so we're social distance at the podium. If you would, would you remove your mask and, and talk to us, and that way I can catch a little of what's going on? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Manager, Jocelyn, thank you for the kind words. My name's Eric Hamilton. I'm from Wilson and Company. I'm a civil engineer. I was a project manager for this, and we're very excited and honored to make this final presentation before the board today. It's the, the county's flood and drainage control master plan. I'm accompanied by the design team here in Las Cruces. I'd like to just go ahead and introduce my team here one by one, and then we'll, if you, if you would allow, Mr. Chairman, just if we can stand here and just make your presentation.
Please go ahead.
I'm Kristy Solzky. I'm a design engineer for the project.
Greg Oliver, civil engineer.
Governor Lee, I'm a civil engineer.
Well, we have a, a PowerPoint presentation here. It's roughly fifteen to twenty minutes. We have some time for questions. I know at, at the end, Mr. Chairman, but we welcome questions, input, dialogue throughout the presentation.
Okay, thank you.
We'll start by introducing the, the project backgrounds and information, the project intent. We have some information from a countywide standpoint, the whole drainage maps, some figures and some data on the county in its entirety. We have prepared two phases reports, and we have them on the back counter there, each volume, Phase One and a Phase Two. We'll go over the, the project's purpose and goals, and then we'll transition it to the study locations that we really focused on. There are six locations within the county that were selected through public engagement and stakeholder recommendations. Within those study locations, we have existing conditions data, and then we've, we have also proposed alternatives.
Harold, can I get you to stand a little closer to the microphone? Just stand closer to the podium. There you go, thank you.
With each alternative, we have cost estimates, and we'll, we'll go ahead and get into some of the details for all of those alternatives. So as Mr. Manager had noted, Sierra County was awarded the capital legislative outlay funding for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. Wilson and Company was awarded the contract last fall, and we've been working on that for over the course of twelve months. As I mentioned, the, the plan consists of two volumes, an existing conditions report, and then a proposed alternatives report. The project intent, the project intent is, was critical from the initial conversations with Mr. Manager, is to identify the flooding conditions and evaluate proposed in, in infrastructure improvements in the areas that affected the populous areas and inhibit its structures. Sierra County has a lot of area, a lot of drainage basins that don't necessarily affect anybody. We evaluated those, but we really were intentionable about focusing on the areas that affected the population. We had public participation. We collected data through stakeholders and public engagement. We had excellent communication with, with Mr. Atwell and Mr. Spears and Jocelyn and, and Mr. Neely, and that facilitated in, in the selection some, of some of the sites. And then we move on to the actual modeling, the engineering, the hydraulic and, and hydrologic modeling. We're, we're looking at storm occurrences. How often do these storms hit and the significance? What's the peak discharge, the flow rate? How much flow rate? Where does the water go? In terms of the data on that water, the velocity, the speed, the depth, how the existing structures can handle that flow rate from different storm events with different runoff capacities? From there, we chose proposed improvements, and for each six site, each structure, we looked at two different design storms, and we proposed an alternative for each storm. The planning document is used to assist prioritizing capital improvement projects. So all of those alternatives can be used down the road to select projects based on available budget. available budget or need. And ultimately, the document is not meant to be shelved. I know it's a big document, but it is a catalyst to secure grant funding. I know that there is already a working project for the Water Trust Board that's going to implement some of our findings coming this next fiscal year. This is a countywide drainage basin map and I'm going to turn it over to Kristi.
Okay, so this is all of Sierra County and the surrounding counties. We developed this watershed map that includes fifty-three drainage basins. A lot of them begin in surrounding counties and they have the outfall near the Rio Grande and other areas of the county. Some of the basins start in Sierra County and end in outfall into other counties, but we have analysis points at your border. So, you know how much water is ending in your county and how you can develop plans to mitigate that. It includes approximately eighty-five-hundred square miles, all of these drainage basins. And we've developed peak flows and volumes for all of those basins. We did study six of those more closely. That being, it's hard to see up there, but it's thirty-one, thirty, twenty-nine, twenty-seven, twenty-five, and twenty-eight. After developing that basin map for the entire county, we moved into the Phase One existing conditions report where we focused on those six watersheds. They're the Anamis, Arroyo Seco, King Canyon, Las Palomas, Cuchillo Negro, and Alamosa. We quantified that storm water runoff for those six water courses and evaluated the existing structures that were there. We collected survey data. We also collected soil samples from those locations where we contracted with a couple of firms to do gradation analysis and sediment transport. We also identified the different flooding issues through these analyses and the record research and public outreach with the stakeholder meetings and public meetings. We also received letters and phone calls to gather that information. Phase Two is the proposed alternative report where we developed the alternatives for each site, whether it was the minimum had two alternatives and the maximum had four alternatives. We evaluated the improvements with consideration to the effectiveness, the constructability, and cost. And we also provided a floodplain management resource that we made for Travis or whoever the acting floodplain management official will be that has a lot of the information that they can use and have by their side, whether it's property ownership maps or the contact information for property owners, jurisdictions, and so forth.
Thank you, Kristi. The proposed improvement development and alternative selection process begins with looking at the design storm recurrence interval. We set off and with the intention to design to the hundred-year storm. That's the standard, the state standard. So, the alternatives were to look at the hundred-year and then look at a lower intensity storm being the fifty-year and each site. Well, that was our intention. When we started evaluating some of these arroyos, the creeks, the flows in the runoff are just extraordinary and in some cases aren't feasible. And I have a slide here, but I'll just share just a tidbit here. In the King Canyon, or in the Bridge of Grace location, we're looking at a storm that has thirty-two thousand cubic feet per second and that structure is sized to handle something much lower. So, we changed the course from the hundred-year to fifty-year to more reasonable, but still providing the maximum flood protection available. So, that's our first process. We have to identify what storm are we going to design to? What makes sense? And then we're looking at upstream and downstream infrastructure. How is this improvement going to affect neighboring properties? And one of the questions came from Mr. Manager when we introduced a structure. He said, "We're on the basis of do no harm." And I responded to Mr. Manager, "Yes, sir. We're looking at all of the effects." Our modeling has backwater upstream and downstream. So, we really get an understanding of how this improvement is going to affect the neighboring properties, the neighboring roadways. And we're talking about flooding risk. What is going to provide the greatest protection? Feasibility, as I mentioned. And then also the historical data plays a big part into it. We talked to the folks that know this community the best. Once we have identified our improvements, the four improvements, we were tasked to look at a selection criteria and rank them and propose the most technically efficient structure. And these are our guidelines here. So, we're looking at technical feasibility, the O and M, operation and maintenance, financial feasibility, the public health and safety. And then in some cases, the alternatives were very close. We have this scientific data and the last one here is engineer's preference. So, as we're modeling this, we get a sense of what structure may peek out to us from an engineer's point of view. So, we have incorporated that as well. The project location map, Kristi, had identified the six sites that were selected as we started this project. Site One, Alamosa Creek, the Bridge of Grace, on the same creek, Alamosa, the Cross Canyon Road, a couple of structures there that just get hit every summer. The inaccuracy of those culvert crossings on Cross Canyon Road, King Canyon, Arroyo, Cuchillo Negro. And then we have two sites that we selected along the Las Palomas Creek. And then our sixth site is Anamis Creek. All right. So, now moving into our first location here, we're talking about the Bridge of Grace, Alamosa Creek. As I mentioned, the storm, this basin is quite large. It facilitates a tremendous amount of runoff. The table up here, if I can use this pointer effectively, we have all the storms here in this column, the two five-ten, fifty, hundred, and the supporting peak flows. CFS is cubic feet per second. So, you can see they add up very significantly. That hundred-year storm, that is a one percent chance or probability that that storm is going to occur or exceed in any given year. That's the standard that we are shooting for. But you can obviously see that thirty-two thousand CFS is just extraordinary. Just to put it in perspective, in irrigation season, south of Elephant Buke Dam, we're looking at twenty-five hundred to thirty thousand CFS. Channel capacity has a lot to do with our selection of our design storm. The channel capacity, in general terms, a trapezoid shape can convey a certain amount of water dependent on its slope and its attributes, its attributes, the soil, and things of that nature. In this case, the channel capacity, it varies. It chokes in and it widens. The properties change a bit, but in general, it's around the three, three and a half to five thousand CFS, fifty-five hundred. The existing structure, we have four cells on a concrete box structure measuring eight-foot span by six-foot rise. That capacity, thirteen hundred CFS. So, now you can relate the capacity to a storm here.
Yeah.
It's just slightly over the two-year, but it can't convey the channel. So, all of the water coming down the channel here is going to overtop it, right?
Yep.
There's plenty of flow. So, if we have a storm that's a ten-year, the channel capacity is under the ten-year. So, you're going to see inundation all throughout here. But whatever is flowing in the channel cannot be conveyed by this structure. So, a lot of our sites, we're looking at what can the channel convey? And then we're designing a structure to simply convey the channel capacity whenever the hundred or fifty-year flows are just exceeding all of our metrics that I described on the last sheet.
Excuse me, Eric. One of the things that I think that we need to keep an eye on is it's not just inundation, it's extreme erosion and channeling that happens from those storms. And the damages are done, most often are repaired out of pocket. We just don't have those resources. So, that's a key consideration.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, excellent point. And we have some, and I think I'm messing this up, Paul. I'm sorry. I need to get back to my slide here. We had some significant effort in terms of channel stability, slope protection. Kristi had mentioned that we had a subconsultant, West Consulting, that looked at the potential for the sediment transport. So, we looked and we evaluated that in terms of our design selection. For example, if the Bridge of Grace had a certain volume of sand that's transported with that flow, we'd put that into our design. But you're absolutely right. And some of the other sites are very prone to the erosion and the slope degradation. So, the next slide, the way that we have these rolling up, I spent a little bit more time on this first, existing conditions, and then we'll get to roll through some of the other sites a little faster. But this is a preferred alternative slide here. We have protection against a five-year storm. Retrofitting the four existing box culverts by supplementing two on each side. So, if we just basically improve the capacity, double it, we'll be able to convey the channel capacity. We looked at several different structures, well, three for as a matter of fact, that would require deconstruction of that, which, you know, it doesn't make the most sense to deconstruct it. The alternatives that ranked highest included the ones that kept the structure in place and we just added on to it. So, two cells on each side of the existing structure, you'll be able to convey the channel capacity. You'll get double the protection here.
The next site that we talked about was Cross Canyon Road. Again, you're seeing a similar situation here with the peak flows for the two, five, ten, fifty, and hundred year with the maximum peak flow being thirty-four thousand, almost thirty-five thousand CFS. The current channel capacity at maximum is fifty-six hundred CFS. It has a northern battery of culverts right here. It's five seventy-two inch culverts. And then right here, we have a set of three seventy-two inch culverts. There are additionally three different culverts in between. So, our preferred alternative for Cross Canyon would be protection against the five-year storm. It would include three twenty-seven by seven contact arch culverts with wingwall treatments and roadway improvement. It would also need to have significant grading of the channel. We'd be combining or realigning the channel to just focus on that northern path, keep all that water in one spot and channel it through. And then we would have a concrete section right here above it that could handle larger storm events where you would still get the protection for the five-year in this event.
So, Kristi, is that basically a spillway, that concrete protection?
Yes, it is, Commissioner. Additionally, I'm messing it up too, Eric. Additionally, the benefit of these half arc structures is the sections are prefabricated. They can go in a lot quicker than your standard CBC structure.
So, King Canyon was an interesting portion of the project because originally the study that we were doing was the, how the flooding was affected from the bridge flows coming from the upstream. And there's an existing approximately thirty-five hundred linear foot of burn protection that is currently being maintained by the county. And our first approach was to see how we had to improve the existing burn to minimize the flooding into the residential area that you see here. After further investigation, we realized that most of the inundation that happens in this residential area is caused by four culverts that exist in Highway 187. The existing bridge has a significant amount of flow up to the forty-five hundred cubic feet per second during the hundred-year event. After running some models and hydrological study, we found out that the culverts actually have a very significant flow as well into the capacity. So, our intent changed towards protection from existing culverts or at least the principal ones that happen on the north, these two ones right here. In this particular site, we did the analysis through Hecras 2D, which allows to do inundations of multiple sources of flows and also identify where the flooding would be as well as the velocities of the water in the site, which allows for better slow protection in order to prevent the future deterioration of the improvements. What we came up with is a burn protection that happens in this area. It's about eighteen hundred feet, which provides protection from the existing flow of the bridge of the King Canyon Arroyo flows as well as this large culvert right here. And by doing that, it provides the same benefits from flood that you will be seeing from the existing conditions as well as significantly reducing the length of the burn. This location will be protected against the hundred-year event and it has the capacity of being further phased out. As you can see, that blue burn right here, it's an addition to the improvements that can further capture flows from the secondary culvert and pretty much eliminates the inundation in the residential area.
One of the things that I just wanted to highlight here with Mr. Gabriel is our modeling efforts are based on worst-case scenarios.
Yeah.
We actually eliminated that levy, that man-made levy that's maintained just to see the worst case. So, from our understanding and the conversations that we had is that levy is prone to being breached.
Yes.
As that water comes around the corner, it's jetted and it reaches that levy.
Yep.
Right? So, we wanted to see, we wanted to see what's the worst case. Let's take that levy out altogether. And just as Gabriel explained is, we quickly identified, well, the subdivision isn't getting flooded by the flows in King Canyon, it's getting flooded by those culverts. So, that's what these models reflect here is no levy, worst-case scenario. And you can see that these ones here, pardon my reach, these ones are the biggest contributors right here that are doing the most inundation to that subdivision. It was a pretty neat findings that we shared with Travis. And I think that there's other projects that can be implemented here. We set out to really focus on the design and understanding the flows of King Canyon, but there's, now that you can, we have clearly identified the flows, there could be supplementary projects to isolate the culvert crossings and deter them around that subdivision.
Commissioner, Chairman, thank you very much. So, our next site is the Cuchillo Negro Arroyo location located just east of I-25 and north of County Road A-007. In this particular location, we do not have much restrictions due to the channel capacity being much greater than our calculated hundred-year storm capacity, about nearly three thousand CFS. So, we were able to design to the one hundred-year storm event for this site. And in this site, there is no existing structure currently through this channel as exists. But our main concern here is the erosion and undermining scour that's happening along this southern channel that's causing it to migrate, that bank line to migrate toward the road and thus potentially creating more dangerous situation as this floods and this travelway can become more dangerous. And we do have one low-water crossing through this, on this road, A-007, that is experiencing some scour on the upstream and downstream end. And so, that is the difference, kind of how this site is unique in that we have two locations through the main channel and also a supplementary channel or tributary through feeding into it. And so, kind of our preferred alternative- And so, kind of our preferred alternative presentation here is to implement a riprap section here, as seen, into this hashed area. And so that kind of protects this bank from being further eroded away, as well as provides more stability for, for that roadway. And so that's how, for that particular channel, is our preferred alternative. And then for our, to replace this low-water crossing, we also have proposed two 72-inch culvert pipes to replace that low-water crossing there, just to have this, this particular alternative will have a better interaction with how we have also proposed this riprap section, as well as protect this concrete scour from getting any worse, rather than just having a spillway like what you suggested or mentioned earlier. It's easier to just allow this flow to go underneath the roadway than to over top, and then create a weak point potentially, rather than just leaving that low-water crossing there. Ms. Christie?
The next two sites are both on Los Palomas Creek, the first one being Site 5A. It's a rather small channel, but it does have a low-water crossing. Right here, that does, according to our conversations with the Roads Department, created a lot of maintenance issues. And so we just decided to take a look at this one in addition to the main site at 5B. The channel capacity is much greater than the 100-year flow event. You see here that it is only 39 CFS for the 100-year event. However, the velocities that go with that create a lot of sediment transport that ends up settling out over the road, and also causes the road to become impassable for the traveling public.
Just on one thing here, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, back to Christie's point, and some of these low-water crossings that we're looking at, you can see that they're, they're basically within the escarpment dirt. So it's a road that's cut into a very steep channel, right?
Yeah.
So this, this flow is bringing a lot of suspended soils down with it, and when it hits this flat roadway section, they deposit. And then that's a continued expensive maintenance challenge. So what we are proposing is to put in culverts that maintain a, a specific inclined slope, so those sediments just pass through, and they're clean, 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 and after a storm, they're, they're, they're just washed down to your main channel here, to prevent any potential ongoing maintenance.
And so our preferred alternative here is for protection against the 100-year storm event. It's two 36-inch pipes. It could be concrete pipe, it could be an ultra-flow CMP pipe that has the same capacity that's a little bit less expensive. You're bringing the roadway up here to keep the water conveyed underneath, therefore the public can continue on their way. The next site is Site 5B. It again is a low-water crossing, much higher peak flows for the 100-year event. The capacity of the channel is still much greater than the peak flows. It's a low-water crossing here, and then there were also some issues with bank stabilization through here. So the preferred alternative here would be four CBC structures that would protect you against the 100-year storm event, raising the road, the public can trans, continue on their way. And then there's 375 feet of a very similar riprap structure that would protect downstream, keep the erosion from getting any worse.
Christie?
Yes, sir.
With, with only a six-foot rise and a three-foot span, is there not a need to be able to clean out those box culverts? And how, how do you do that?
Well, again, as Eric said, we're using the velocities.
Self-cleaning.
That can maintain self-cleaning properties.
Okay.
Okay, so our last site here is Enemas Creek, very straightforward site, very similar to the Cuchillo Negro Royal, as I explained a second ago. The only uniqueness here with, with this site is that our channel capacity is, is less than the 100-year and the 50-year peak flow. And so with that, we only were able to design to a 10-year storm for these sites, for this particular site. And the same issue here as with Cuchillo Negro, in that this bank is being degraded with heavy scour, and as this, as the water flows through here, the channel velocities change, and so this kind of, the direction of the flow just continues to scour out this bank and cause it to migrate towards the road, once again presenting that same issue of it, the channel bank nearing the roadway, causing potentially dangerous situation. And so our preferred alternative here is just, once again, protection against the 10-year storm event, with this riprap section lining in at this hatched section on this aerial to, once, protect that strip where the water is, where the flows are scouring out away at that bank and causing, so this is essentially going to act as slope protection to prevent that scour from further approaching that roadway.
So every single alternative that we did, all four for each six sites, we have a detailed cost estimate that are provided in the report volumes. This is just a snippet of each preferred alternative. The fully construction estimate, we do have a planning level contingency, and you may ask, Eric, what, what does that planning level contingency mean as, against, or, or maybe compared to a design level contingency? Planning level is, is a little bit more. There's more fluff, so to speak, in there. So these costs are inflated a little bit more because we do not know what, to the extent that we do when we design a project. So for example, we, we have an estimate there for, to inflate the unclassified excavation, all the excavation that's going, going to be needed to do this. We inflate it by 15% because they're, on a planning level of design, we just don't know enough to reduce that contingency. So some of these numbers may be sticker shock, but when you look at the report, you'll see that there are built-in contingencies to them. We look at these numbers based on 2020 market data. We look at NMDOT average unit bid prices, projects that Wilson and Company has done in this area, in Doñana County, or any of the, of the local areas here, where we can establish, yes, we bid this project, we know that this particular unit item bid and was awarded at this price. So that's how we develop our estimates. We, we had engaged the manager staff to rank them in terms of cost, and, and to, you know, from when we started this project, it was apparent that the Bridge of Grace was, was one of the most, the key priority projects here. And as you can see from this table, it, it ranked number one. And then the alternative is, again, the, just the number as we have them identified in the report, and that's a preferred alternative. Going forward, I had, I'd started by mentioning that the intent, as the manager described to us when we started this project, is these reports weren't going to sit on the shelf. And, and what they may be used to do in the future is prioritizing for flood mitigation projects. There's several projects in, in these defined areas that can be rolled off. There's great understanding of the, the major flood channels and creeks now. We have provided project benefits, can develop implementation strategies, identify funding and regional collaboration, and then ultimately, it's a document that will serve to secure future funding and establish other real projects that will go to construction. And with that, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we'll stand for questions, and thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Commissioners, questions?
I do have one. So first, I'll thank the presentation, and there's a lot that goes into this. I've been involved in some of these projects, and a year is not a very long time to do these, and so I commend you guys for the work you've done. As far as putting in some of the riprap on some of those corners, what was your process of examining the impacts downstream from installing that? Can you just kind of go through that?
Sure. You know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna speak a little bit, and then I'm gonna invite Greg, because he did the large study in terms of the scour, the protection, the apron that extends below the toe of the slope. So if you're looking at a slope, the slope comes down, and then what we call the toe is where it meets the channel bottom. There's an apron that extends out there. All of those elements were designed based on the velocity and the sheer forces that that water enacts on the soil, as like in, for example, whenever you have a channel bend, there's different properties. The flow may be coming in there in a laminar state, smooth, and then it picks up and becomes erosive and degrades the channel slopes. And then after the bend, just at the point of tangency, then it'll go back to a flow regime that's more stable.
Yep.
So as we look at that whole section, we have, in our HECRAAS models, we have cross-sections that identify what this water surface elevation, we call it the WSE. We look at it at intervals of 50 feet down that channel. At its existing condition, you could see spikes where this is very unstable. And then a proposed condition where we're implementing and, and helping that water become more stable, so back from the flow regime of erosive, back to stable, then we can clearly identify, all right, this water surface elevation has dropped down. And then we follow it all the way through to make sure that it doesn't impact, adversely impact, the neighboring downstream properties or to the next channel bend.
And then just, sure, for me, just the reason I ask is there's been some stuff in the past where, you know, some flood control was done, and then the neighbor says what was done impacted theirs. And so I'm just, I'm happy to see that you guys looked into that. So whenever, in, when we install these projects, we're not hearing from the neighbors of saying that what the county did impacted their property. And so that's why I wanted you to explain that, so thank you for going in depth on that. That's something we want to certainly minimize in the future.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
No comments.
Well, it's a, it's an outstanding quick look at the situation. Thank you for all of your diligence in getting this document prepared. I think it's, it's dawning, I think we're looking at plus or minus $7 million to do all the projects, and that's, we're always limited by funds, but if we can prioritize and seek grants and especially flood dollars to, to impact in a positive way, that's great. Mr. Manager, did you have anything?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I just think they did an outstanding job with, with the project. Eric mentioned Commissioner's question. Not only did they look at, you know, the impact downstream, but they looked at the impact upstream.
Yes.
Which has also been a critical issue for, for many of the residents. I'm, I'm absolutely just pleased with the degree of analysis they did and modeling they did on each one of these drainages. I think that Eric and the team, Wilson, they just did a fantastic job with the report. It's something we're going to be using for many years to come.
Attorney Pato, did you have any reflections or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I don't, but I wanted to thank Wilson for that very detailed report they provided today. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming today, and we appreciate the information, and we'll look forward to working with you in the future as we go forward. So Eric and Christie and Greg and Gabriel, thanks for coming today.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Manager, everyone here, Jocelyn, we sincerely thank you, and it's, it's been a very awesome project to be involved with, that 12 months was, was a sheer joy, and thank you for time today.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Going forward, Board of Finance, we have, I see October reconciliation. I don't have anything in the book. Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir. You see the, the documents are there.
Okay.
Under reconciliation.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the October reconciliation as presented.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call, Shelley.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion is approved. I see nothing in old business, is that correct, Mr. Manager?
That is correct, Mr. Chair.
The new business, we have a resume of Donovan Skaggs for the planning board. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we did, we have a vacancy. Larry Holmes has resigned from the planning board. Larry's been on the board for many years.
Many years.
Since I've been here, for sure.
Yep.
And we advertised, and to date, we only have one letter of interest and resume of interest.
Do we need to approve that, that one application for appointment, or what's, what do we need to do?
The Commissioners, if you wish to appoint him, you would make the appointment today.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one question. How long do we advertise for?
Two weeks.
Two weeks?
Mr. Chairman, well, nothing against Mr. Skaggs. I think that we all know Mr. Holmes had a extensive background in title searches and, and the like in the planning field, actually. Mr. Skaggs' resume is very extensive in the medical field, and I appreciate his interest in community service. However, I'd like to just advertise one more time and then reevaluate this at our next meeting, just to make sure that there isn't somebody out there who was away on vacation or quarantining and didn't get in. And then maybe it would be appropriate to move forward at that time. That's my personal view.
Yes, sir.
Is my mic on? Here, can you just now?
Okay, great. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I would also add that on the, on the agenda, it's listed as resume of Skaggs for the planning board. It's not appointment of planning board members, so I might suggest that if we're going to consider the appointment at a next commission meeting, that we add appointment of planning board member to the agenda, so that way the public knows exactly what it is we're going to be considering.
Even more appropriate.
Thank you for that input.
Sure, of course.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
We'll move to table the planning board appointment until next meeting.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call, Shelley.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion passes, and with that, we'll re-advertise, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
You modify your motion to advertise for another two-week period?
I think that was part of the instruction, but if we need to.
All right.
Do we need to?
No, I, I think that, I think that's pretty clear, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Contracts, agreements, and procurement, Manager Swingle and Jocelyn?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, what you have before you is an MOU for a Health Resource and Services Administration grant. The grant is really going to be between the Center for Health Innovation and Olive Tree. We are participating with them, with the process, so they wanted us to sign the agreement as well. Basically, what we'll do is provide, Virginia will provide guidance and, and leadership from the county's perspective on the activities between Olive Tree and the CHI. There's no revenue or money in it for the county. We're not expensing any, we're not receiving any, just more of our, our role and involvement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Luna makes a motion to approve the MOU.
Second.
Moved in seconded, roll call, Shelley.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
The MOU is approved, and we'll sign it. DWI grant agreement, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. What you have before you is amendment number one to the, the DWI grant. You approved the grant four, four months ago or thereabout, and the amendment is basically allowing us to, we've requested the money that we sent back to them that were not used, that it be reverted back to the county's funds. To do that, they have to, we have to complete the amendment. So it's approximately $16,000 of unused funds, we would like it reverted back to the county, to the DWI program.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Day moves to approve the grant agreement.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved in seconded, roll call, please.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Motion is approved. We'll go to resolutions, ordinances, and proclamations. Resolution 109027, Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Staff was directed to draft a resolution in support of a veteran service officer be dedicated to Sierra County and Grant Counties. Presently, we have over 6,000 veterans that are in the two counties. Presently, we have over 6,000 veterans that are in the two counties. The average veteran has to travel roughly two hours to attain any of the services through the existing program, and this would make it much, much easier on our community veterans. Presently, the, the veterans officer that's in place has each single, each officer has six counties that they're trying to provide services for. This will reduce it to two to one, one individual for two counties. So this is the resolution, and it is asking, acknowledging that the county supports the assignment of a veteran officer for the two, two counties.
I really think that we need to recognize Randall Aragon in spearheading this, this effort. He's not only a career military man, but he also has a heart for veterans, and he really pushed this to get better service, especially with the elder veterans that are having health complications and absolutely unable to travel. So this is a, a very good resolution in, in my mind. So is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Luna makes a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Moved in second. Did a roll call, Shelley?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes. Sorry.
And the motion passes. Resolution 109029, opposing recommendations of the New Mexico Civil Rights Commission. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. You've all received information from the New Mexico counties, and either the county attorney or myself have kept you updated on the activities of the Civil Rights Committee and some of their proposed recommendations to, for the legislature. These, New Mexico counties has asked us to provide comment, which we have on behalf of the county, as well as the county attorney did it as well. In addition, they wanted a resolution opposing the recommendations that the Civil Rights Commission is submitting to the legislature, and we're asking for the legislature, urging the legislature to provide more resources to address root causes of civil rights claims. I'll let the county attorney talk about some of the, the legal aspects of the, of the proposed changes that they're recommending, but I think an analogy that the attorney drafted in his comments to the Civil Rights Commission is, bottom line is, the public has the ability to sue when they've been wronged for civil rights violations. Making it easier to sue law enforcement officers or detention personnel doesn't make better detention officers or law enforcement officers. The analogy that Dave used was, making it easy for the legislature to sue teachers doesn't make better teachers. I think it was an excellent analogy that he used in his correspondence with the, the commission, and this will have a drastic impact. It will impact the revenues of every governmental entity in the state of New Mexico very quickly. Now, defer to the county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, thank you. So as Bruce mentioned, the, the Civil Rights Commission had several meetings, virtual meetings. Again, people weren't allowed to attend, and the law enforcement wasn't allowed to attend, the detention officers weren't allowed to attend and present their concerns en masse, in person, because this is being done through a pandemic. And so what, what happened was, despite our submission of our concerns and many different counties' submissions of their concerns, the Civil Rights Commission made a recommendation to the legislature that would include attorney's fees, would have a provision which would include attorney's fees for prevailing plaintiffs, plaintiffs on top of compensatory damages. And in New Mexico, the federal courts have recognized fees up to $450 an hour for attorneys. And those, those fees often exceed the awards that are ultimately given to the person who's allegedly been injured. It would require that public employers indemnify public employees for claims brought under the recommended cause of action. That means that the public entity would pay for the cost of defense and settlements of judgment. And finally, it would not include qualified immunity to defense, so we would lose that ability to assert qualified immunity to defense. And that means that officials can be second-guessed in hindsight for making judgment calls on matters of unsettled law. And so this resolution, and I made a slight revision, a technical revision, there's something I, an oversight, and I've sent it off to DORA, but this, this revision would oppose those recommendations, and again, would request that the, the legislature, I mean, first, we request the commission, but ultimately, the legislature consider what's really driving these sorts of issues. I mean, we need additional resources. They need to actually, you know, there was a, there was a, a news, a news report last week about all these folks who have faced these different charges, law enforcement personnel who's faced these charges, giggly of folks who, you know, whose credibility has been challenged based on their interactions. There needs to be accountability, for sure, you know, but the, the problem isn't law enforcement. The problem isn't detention. The, the problem is really in the resources we're making available for them so that we can address these larger systematic problems that we're seeing as society. So I don't believe that creating an additional cause of action, you know, it'll, it'll make plaintiffs richer, it'll make plaintiffs' lawyers richer. I've, I've expressed my concern in here that there are 17 of these folks that sit in our legislature who are going, who may very well benefit from this legislation, and that's concerning to me. I mean, people, you know, should use their positions as public trust and, you know, and, and not use it to profit themselves. And, and, and I don't see where creating a new cause of action, in addition to the 1983 actions they have in federal district court, in addition to the Torque Claims Act actions they have in state district court, you know, is going to fix this problem. What it's going to do is divert resources that are already limited to making plaintiffs' attorneys richer and insurance companies richer, and that does nothing for the counties. It takes away from our ability to, to conduct, you know, safe and fair elections. It takes away from our ability to, to put towards, money towards the roads and fire, fire protection and the other vital services we provide the public. So for that reason, I would respectfully request this board consider adopting the resolution opposing the recommendations of the Civil Rights Commission.
Attorney Pato, a point of clarification. Does this extend to the issue of qualified immunity on all elected officials, not just law enforcement and detention?
My understanding is that the Civil Rights Commission was considering the issue in relation to detention and law enforcement, but I don't believe that the recommendations were so limited. So I think that it may, it may also extend to other elected officials as well.
Thank you. Questions?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the resolution as amended by our county attorney.
Commissioner Luna, seconds.
Moved in second. Did a roll call, Shelley?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we go into executive session pursuant to Section 1015 E through H to discuss pending and threatened litigation personnel and real estate as listed on the agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Did a roll call?
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
Okay, we are in executive session.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Day moves to come out of executive session and certify that no action was taken and only matters listed on the agenda were discussed.
Commissioner Luna seconds.
A move in second. A roll call please.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
I don't think we have any further business. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Our next meeting will be December 15th and we'll schedule a special meeting and announce that to the public. So thank you everyone.